Two minutes. In respect of everyone's time, we hope that folks here can get their point across. And as time permits, we'll try to address. As you will notice, we do have our chief of police online as well. And rest assured, I'd like to thank my fellow colleagues on the council. And also from the public for wanting this sort of forum. I think this is the first of many to come. So, so we can gauge and get an idea as to our community concerns. What I would ask is that we show proper decorum and respect for one another. I know these are some challenging times and folks may be a little bit upset, but we are here trying to be productive and work out the issues. So, thank you so much for being here and we'll go ahead and get started. At this particular time, I'd like to turn it over to our vice mayor, Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving us the opportunity today to speak. My name is Justin Manalo. Been a resident of Daly City since the age of eight years old and really grew up in the community. Went to all of the elementary school district and high school district. And really am humbled to be able to serve the community I was raised in. You know, these, Mayor, I thank you for the opportunity as these are extremely crucial times in which we have the opportunity to impact change. And by hearing from the community today, it's so important. If we look around social movements and how changes occur, it's really unfortunate that lives had to be taken to get to this place today. And so, giving the opportunity to residents and community members to speak about the Black Lives Matter movement and their concerns and ways for us to affect change within the communities we all live and work in. We are in a critical juncture and a point in history where we know too many lives have been taken and too many black lives have been taken. And with a conversation today, I'm open to hear from our community members and see what we can do as we work together. I was deeply inspired by Jordan, president of Black Student Union, who led a youth-led march from Jefferson High School to City Hall. And seeing that empowerment and seeing him as a young black leader speak his voice and bring others along with him was truly inspiring. And today, I thank you for the opportunity. I'm here with open ears, an open heart, and really to work with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Buena Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
That's fine, thank you.
So, I want to welcome everyone in the community in particular to this meeting. And I'm very grateful that we are having an opportunity to hear from you. I'm very interested in your stories in particular. I'm also interested in, I mean, I think out of your stories, the issues are going to come out. And I'm very interested in also with your opinions about some solutions. So, I welcome whatever you have to say because I think this is a critical time and something that we need to hear from all the community members. This is very important and I'm glad that the mayor has put forward this special study session. Because we're, we're going to be making some decisions. And it is vitally important that you express yourselves because we need to be informed. And we need to sort of get the consensus of what the community wants and needs and factor that into our decision-making process. By way of background, I'm also an attorney, a public defender. I am very interested in criminal justice reform, immigration reform, and civil rights. I've been a public defender for over 25 years. And so, this is a matter that I really take to heart. And so, yeah, so thank you for being here and we look forward to discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Next turn it over to Dr. Rod, that's Mike Bual, a council member.
Hello, hello, everyone. Hope everybody's having a good evening. I just want to say thank you for everybody that took time to other day to join our discussion. I just want to, I guess, start off on an ethnic studies instructor educator. I just want to, I guess, start off on my ethnic studies instructor educator for the past two decades. And I just want to just, you know, as a person that teaches history and ethnic studies, we're not going to solve like the systemic racism all in one meeting, right? But we're in a time of history where we can listen, learn, imagine, and transform our world. We're entering a new normal. And when I say a new normal, what this pandemic has shown is that inequities that has, has been present, has been amplified, right? So, when we talk about like housing and gentrification, homelessness, and racism, like these things became amplified, became more into the known. And I think what we're, we're in, we're just like what the other account, my colleagues were saying, that we're in a conjuncture in history where we, we got to make changes, right? And that racism didn't just start now, right? It was started in establishment of the United States, right? The colonization of indigenous people, the slavery of African people to come to our country. And the continued ideological oppression that still otherizes different people, right? Like I have two children that can be third, fourth generation Filipino, but by the way they look, they'll still be seen as foreigner. We have institutions that was created based on white supremacy. And I'm not talking about the KKK. I'm talking about the ideology that has poisoned our society to think this way. The institutions that were, that were created to suppress and oppress and marginalize our communities. The interpersonal oppression has affected people one-on-one that have normalized this behavior of white supremacy and this ideology to hate other people and to leave people out and take away resources, resources for people to have access to become full human beings in the society. And this internalized oppression where we have these messages of splintering who you are, assimilation of trying to be something you're, you're not, erasure of your cultural identity, that leads to a colonial mentality of self-hate, to mental health issues, that this thing is not just an action of police brutality, but it's an institutional and ideological problem, systemic problem, that, that's the reason why I ran and become, wanted to city council. Because I truly believe if we want true liberation, it starts with the personal. It starts with the local. And hopefully, we change this globally. So, I'm looking forward to hearing the public engage in a conversation with y'all and hopefully build on something. I want to collaborate and build. I think it's time for maybe a Human Rights Commission or some sort of way where we can integrate and move forward. We integrate understandings, ideologies, conversations, and build upon this. Because in times of crisis, there are opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Okay. And last council member, Councilmember Pam DeJavani. Pam, will you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity to engage with the community. And I know that people are grieving. I first like to acknowledge George Floyd. George Floyd, who, where all this nationwide, I hope he's looking down, which I'm sure he is, and knows, knows that this will not be go unheard. This is, indeed, indeed, I see a sea, as John Lewis said the other day on a call, he sees hope. The reason he sees hope is because he sees people of all colors, irregardless of ethnicity, in the streets and standing there in a peaceful movement, trying to let people know this is an injustice in Black Lives Matter. And there's been a movement for a long time. And as our other council members alluded to, 400 years and being forced to come here in shackles and chains. And there are shackles and chains that are invisible today because they are oppressed, because they were not afforded the equal opportunities that are, others are afforded, whether it be socioeconomics or an accessibility to healthcare or the criminal justice or what have you. That we need to continue this. This is a movement. And Martin Luther King's dream is still alive. And we will get there. We will get there together. And that's why your voice is, tonight is the beginning. And in Daly City, you will hear even from our police. And so, you'll know, you'll know what it's like here in Daly City. Even though this is nationwide, this is our community. And while we sit in this seat and we are able to stand up for you, with you, and hear your voice. And, and my background, a little bit about it, is that National Council Jewish Women, who always has stood up and marched with the MLK Junior Movement, as well as many others, are injustices. And injustice, as you know, the people that know me, that I am not a bystander. I am a person of action. I'm a person that will take the actions and listen to the people first and make sure that I will fight for the equality that you deserve. And at the same time, we're going to bridge this together. We're going to come together as a community. And so, there can be peace on all sides. As my other colleague said, Dr. Rod, it doesn't happen every night and we know that. But we will continue it together and we can achieve this. We can finally achieve the character of a person, not the color of their skin, to get rid of the oppression of what is happening. So, there'll be peace on both sides, even our law enforcement. And I also want to acknowledge, this is the fifth anniversary of the South Carolina church shooting. And today is the fifth year of Emmanuel. So, I wanted to make sure that people knew that, we know that happened and they are about peace as well. So, I'm very proud that people are going out in the streets and doing peaceful movements. And that our Black Student Union locally, Jeff, is doing so as well. And we continue this together, whether it's Bay Shore or wherever you come from. We're all one people and we can do this. We can really do this. And it's going to be painful at times, but we're going to have real conversations. And that's important to do that. So, also that my background was in fighting for, not fighting for, but supporting and fighting for the continued civil rights. So, I want people to know that you have people here that will support you and give you the voice that you need. And that this is just the awakening, the awakening that will not stop of the youth. And so, looking forward to hear from you tonight. And then we can start moving forward and have many more conversations. So, thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity and my colleagues and the community. Thank you very much and Black Lives Matter. And we will have peace on both sides and together. Thank you.
I thank you, Councilmember DeJavani. Okay, to the participants here, you've heard from each one of the council members and our thoughts and concerns as well. What I would like to do is open it up to the public forum at this time for folks to speak up and indicate and tell us what are some of your concerns, especially here in Daly City. And of course, we cannot accommodate the concerns throughout the whole state or the whole nation. But we can set the tone to begin. And who knows, there may be others to follow. But again, happy to hear. And what I would like to do at this time, our host, Stephen, who's on our staff, will look at the hand that are raised. And feel free to raise your hand and tell us your thoughts. I do see one hand. Stephen, so with your permission, we'll start off with Nadia Flamenco. You agree? I see her hand is up.
Yes, Mayor, I have the list of all the registered attendees. And I'm not sure that everyone knows how to raise their hand, but we can certainly. With Nadia, and then I can just read names off the list that said they want to speak after that. Or however you want to move forward is fine.
That sounds great. Want to explain to them how raise their hand or?
Yeah, so not everyone is joining by Zoom. But if you are, you can, actually, I have to figure out how to do this myself.
I think you click on participants. And then there's a dialogue box on the bottom right-hand side that says raise hand. Okay. And I'm unsure as to how you would do it if you're calling in from your cellphone.
Yeah, I have the list of those people, so I can always call their names out.
Okay. All right. Great. And we'll also monitor the chat box as well. I see one says not able to raise my hand on Zoom, but I am ready. Thank you. That's from Josh Berry. Okay, it looks like folks are starting to chime up, but we'll keep you in mind, Mr. Berry. And we'll start with the raised hands that we see. So, Ms. Nadia Flamenco?
Hi, thank you for the invitation. So, for me, the most important thing is we already figure out a problem here in our nation. And for me is how to create solidarity and how to make leaders who really want to impact their community with positivity. First, the community. And second, the money. We need police to protect us, of course, and serve us. We need leaders with all the colors who protect each other. And leaving away the economic interest, but guided by empathy to all the community. And I believe supporting police and increasing the representation of minorities inside the police department will bring more stable situation with the minority. That we need maybe more representation of leaders from the police department who are mixed with colors. And that's what to me will bring more stable understanding for communities. Of course, we need the protection of police always. And, and we value all the service that police department has been doing away from all the Black Lives Matters and everything. But we need leaders from different colors involving our community. That's, that's what I believe it could be a good point for solving this problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nadia. And by the way, we are taking notes and I'm sure this will be more than one forum. So, with that being said, we'll move down to the next person. I see a Carolina, Carolina, are you there? Oh, there you go. Okay. Okay, there you go. You should be fine, Carolina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Carolina Parales and I have been working for more than two years in Daly City, especially in the, in two public schools, three public schools, elementary public schools in the area, the Bay Shore, Woodrow Wilson, and lately, J.F. Kennedy. And as you might know, Faith in Action works in both counties, San Francisco and San Mateo. And we have been putting in front of every, our work, it's led by the leaders. And of course, for Latinos, immigration, it's, it's big, right? So, I had the opportunity to speak with some of you in person. You have been very grateful to, to open your hearts and your time to us. And I'm very grateful for that. What inspired me is that when we were discussing about the recent, what it happened to George Floyd among Latinas, we stopped seeing our own issues as priorities. And we, I would like to quote one of the leaders that said at that moment, "I was the mom of George Floyd." Who was, I was not able to go and rescue him for what he was, he was suffering. And all of us were really crying. And I think this is something that needs to happen. Because of the oppression and injustices we, in different communities are living, we are focusing in our own issues. And we stop seeing each other as brother and sister, trying to fight the same, the same systems that are oppressing us. I would like to see more activities at city level that open up, especially bringing translators who give the opportunity to people that do not speak the language to express themselves and speak in an open, you know, with open mic and heart, to what they are going through. We had a meeting with some clergy from the black communities. And she, she was saying, "When I saw the kids on cages, I stopped seeing the oppressions that my community was suffering for many, many years. And I just start seeing you," right? So, I think if we can create those moments that we can see each other as human race, because there are many opportunities when we see each other as the, as the other and not as us. And this is what it's creating, what it's happening now. We, we sometimes create communities of fear, that Filipinos fear black and Latino. And there is this saying that there cannot be, right, relationship between different communities. And I don't want to use the, the label race because we should be just one human race. With that sentiment, Faith in Action has put a vigil together that it's going to happen this Friday at 11:00 a.m. And, and we're going to be sending invites soon to all of you. And we choose Daly City because it's the border between the two counties. And because we know the importance of the city as the San Mateo County level, there is a lot of activism in San Francisco, but very few in San Mateo. And besides just a march or a vigil, we want to commit as, as an organization to put at the center of our work, the, the black community. Because they are the ones that have been suffering the most and for longer time than any other vulnerable community. Thank you so much for the opportunity to express, I think, the sentiments of many in, in the city that cannot speak because of the language barrier.
Thank you very much, Ms. Paralia. Please make sure you get back to us with that video. I'm anxious to see it. I'm sure we all are. And thank you for thinking of us and for being here this evening as well. Okay, looks like we have Shereen Malik Azali. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Amazingly.
Welcome back. Good to see you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Sylvester, Vice Mayor Manalo, members of the council and all the wonderful community and city leaders here, taking their time on this important topic. My name is Shereen Malik Azali and I am a health professional that's been working on issues of health equity and racial equity for about 20 years now. And I'm a fairly recent resident of Daly City. So, this is my first council meeting, so I may be a little nervous. But I have been working on this issue so long, I really wanted to share that racism has very real health implications of people of color and should be a critical lens for how we make decisions in government, regardless of whether it's policing or other institutions. And research shows that about, only about 20% of people's health is due to access and quality of healthcare, which means 80% are due to the social, environmental opportunities and behaviors that support that. So, that means that most decisions that promote health aren't done in hospitals and doctors' offices or health departments, but actually are held in rooms like this. So, I implore you to think about what that means for the decisions that you collectively continue to make. And research shows that racism impacts health, that the chronic stress on people of color's bodies literally wears down and wears away the bodies that creates the conditions for chronic diseases and illness to thrive. So, this is one of the reasons that we see higher, bigger challenges, health challenges in our communities of color. And while policing is the system that's being scrutinized now, I want to be clear that the systems of oppression are embedded in every institution and interaction. And we all have a role to play in breaking that down. And that means scrutinizing our systems, like these study sessions, rooting out the unconscious and conscious ways that racial injustices perpetuate. And this takes systemic thoughtful analysis, which can, needs to be intentional and likely uncomfortable for many of us. Right now, as a health professional with the disproportionate impacts of COVID-19 on people of color, the continued police brutality of black communities and communities of color, the structural racism, the xenophobia that our Filipino-Chinese, Pacific Islander, and Asian communities are facing, it's important to recognize racism as a public health crisis and treat it with the same urgency. Our, our communities of color have been traumatized by the fear of police. And racism is a life or death issue. I recently heard from San, South San Francisco pediatrician that the rate of black young men dying at the hands of police was on par with the likelihood of measles, getting measles. And consider the amount of infrastructure from federal down that we have. And consider the amount of infrastructure from federal down that we have to support and prevent measles. That's how we should be facing this right now. And, you know, we should consider really focusing our resources on prevention. What does that look like? That looks like workforce capacity building for our police, for our government officials. That looks like investment in youth and investing in mental health resources for mental health emergencies. We don't need guns to come when there's someone that does not need that kind of response. We need strong community and police relationships. We need to stop, we need to ban chokeholds and strangleholds, require de-escalation, require comprehensive reporting. We need to ban shooting at moving vehicles. And we just need to respect that police are not trained social workers. This, they, and many of our emergencies are actually social emergencies and don't require a gun, and that we need to figure out how to bring our resources to the right places for the right responses. So I'd like to just, I'd like to see the council consider prioritizing resources for these prevention and de-escalation models instead of punitive measures. And I really appreciated council member Dr. Rod's mention of the idea of a human rights commission to have a systemic and constant place where we're having these conversations. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you so much, Shereen. Good to see you back again, and very good points. Thank you so much. Okay, next person, Josh Barry. Josh, can you hear us? We'll give him a moment in case he has to unmute.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Ah, we can hear you, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, great. My name's Josh Barry. I'm a professional filmmaker. I'm a lifelong resident of the Bay Area, and I've lived in Daly City with my family for five years now. I've written an old statement here. I just want to read it in the interest of time. So in 2014, an unarmed black man was killed by police in Ferguson. This tragedy led to major changes in police departments nationwide. We spent millions of dollars on body cameras, revised use of force policies, and more training for police. The President of the United States and the Justice Department implemented major reforms. This was not the first time that an unarmed black man was killed by the state, nor was it the last. Now, it's six years later, and the policing of black and brown people in America has worsened. Daly City is not immune. Looking at the Daly City Police Force Analysis System, I'm not an expert, but looking at that, it shows me that 75% of police force used on people in Daly City is committed on black and Hispanic people. And yet, the majority of Daly City is Asian and white. This is a clear example of systemic racism. I recognize that systems of oppression are not exclusive to policing, but I'm here today to talk about policing in Daly City. So as a resident, I consistently encounter four specific problems in my neighborhood, on the streets. Our streets are littered with trash. There's a large amount of vacant commercial properties, people experiencing mental health crises on the street, in public, and speeding and reckless driving that put our lives at risk. None of these issues are fixable by the police. But the Daly City Police Department has more funding by far than any other city department. So our police are currently asked to do many things. They patrol for traffic violations. They show up at accidents. They respond to mental health calls. All of this work can be distributed to other teams of unarmed people, traffic managers, social workers, and mental health experts. A network of traffic cameras can solve speeding and reckless driving better than cops currently do. So when your only tool is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. Currently, our police have a hammer, and they're asked to fix everything with that hammer. So in closing, my main question is, and you don't have to answer this now, but we all have to ask this question, is Daly City looking at reinvesting police budget into other areas of the community that are underfunded? And if so, how much money is being considered, and where would that money go? And if not, why not? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry, and thank you for your patience in hanging in there amongst the technical problems we had earlier. And again, thank you so much for your statements. Okay, looks like the next up on the list is Ms. Kalima Salahudin. Kalima, can you hear us? I know you're an expert at using Zoom, so. There you go. You got the floor.
By now, I am, yes. Hi, I'm Kalima Salahudin. I'm the president of Jefferson Union High School District. And I'm also a mom of three children. One of them, my son, who is 24 years old, and he has autism. And so since he was born, I have been afraid for him and being outside. And the diagnosis of autism kind of elevated that for me. And he, he struggles, just like any person with autism does. But I have to be harder on him because I'm like, you can't have that type of struggle. Because if something happens and the police are called, I'm afraid of what's gonna happen to being as non-verbal as he is, and what happens when he's overwhelmed. And so I piggyback on previous comments on, even when he was in school, even as a student, and there was a mental health issue that he was having, there is no one to call except for the police. So if there was a way that, if there was an issue with someone that is having a mental health crisis, that there was somebody that is more prepared to handle that and has that expertise, especially with the lens on autism, since that is, a huge wave of adults are coming into society that have autism and that are reaching adulthood. And so this problem is going to be more prevalent and persistent. And I don't want everyone, or every time he has an episode or issue, that the first response is for someone to call the police. But that is, right now, the only option available to him, no matter where he is. Secondly, looking at policy, because again, as elected official, that's kind of our wheelhouse, looking at policy, that Campaign Zero has created a model use-of-force policy that I looked at and I thought reflected a lot of the areas, especially with data oversight and had it on another department that would handle mental health. And so perhaps taking a look at that, becoming part of former President Obama's initiative on this and taking the mayor's pledge. And I think part of that has been handled here with the community outreach and community forum, because there's no really, you know, there's no switch that we can flip and everything's going to be changed, like this is a process. So I think it lays out a format for process and how it could assist cities in working through that process. And then last, this is a societal issue, and it's part of education. There's a part that we have to play too, so I'm hoping that we can work together on this issue, both with education, police, how we interact, and the best way to serve students. Because there are a lot of times in our school district that, you know, we have the police on campus, and I want those interactions to be positive. I want to see if there's a way that we can have them be fewer. And that there is a disproportionate incidences of police on our campuses in Daly City that doesn't happen in Pacifica, and that is not relative to how many students are at each school. Though, we have a higher rate of calling the police out for our students of color because the schools in Pacifica have fewer students of color than they do in Daly City. And so how do we balance that out? That is something that I'm looking at personally as a school board member and working with the city, other things that we can do when our students are having issues on campus that don't require police. So I just want to thank all of you, Mayor Sylvester, Vice Mayor Manalo, and the council for starting this conversation, and I'm hoping to work with you in the future on solutions.
Thank you, Kalima, and thank you for being here. And if anybody doesn't know you, we know about your passion, especially for our kids, and thank you for sharing your personal issues as well. You know, folks, we haven't instituted a timer, and we normally give two minutes. And looks like we have 36 participants at this time, and if everybody spoke for two minutes, that comes out to 72 minutes. Divide that by 60, it's a little bit of about an hour and 15 minutes. So what I would like to do for the remaining speakers, at least give them three minutes to talk, and please try to be respective of that. And maybe we set aside, based upon how the questions go, for our police chief to weigh in and provide a report to you folks as well, if that's what you want to do. But again, this is a forum to hear everyone and to get some ideas and to move forward. Okay, so Stephen, if you can activate the timer and give everyone at least three minutes, and then we can go from there. Once again, our last speaker, thank you, Kalima. I'd like to call on Erika Hernandez at this time, and Mr. Jordan Hill, you'll be next. All right. Erica, you have the floor.
Hi, everyone. This is actually my first meeting, having been born and raised in Daly City for over 35 years, and I appreciate the platform that you're providing, especially in this space. I'm going to read off a script so that I can stay with time. So I grew up in Broadmoor Village and received my K-3 education from Brisbane Unified School District. I am the first in my family to attend college despite taking an enormous amount of debt because I wanted to attend a private institution. I appreciate my parents' investment and advocacy for when teachers, schools, and districts discriminated against me so that I could accomplish this. So why does this matter now in relation to Black Lives Matter movement? Because little has changed for the future generations of black children in Daly City. Because of my positions in education, I continue to interact regularly with students and families from this area, because I want to extend them the more opportunities than I myself had. But this task becomes so difficult when system inequities continue to exist, as Dr. Rod mentioned when he opened. In my positions, I have offered opportunities, but the school systems, they give teachers the lack of recommendation for the black students when I'm looking for a student for an opportunity that I offer. And I know that it's not always the teachers. There's probably some implicit bias there, so I changed my own tactics, and I asked the teachers instead, by partnering with them, to nominate students. And when they gave me their nominations, they could only offer me two students, often who are Asian, and they described as obedient and good kids, essentially easy for them to deal with in a class size of over 30. And again, I wanted to continue to offer opportunities, and so I realized that still I needed to look further. And so I looked further into districts to find why teachers were having such a difficult time managing their classrooms. And even as far as some teachers telling me that they had their local police on speed dial. And what I found was that Jefferson School District, like many districts in California, are community-funded, and that means most of the budget comes from property taxes, as all of you probably know. And so then I look at Daly City in comparison to all of San Mateo County, and this part really sort of always frustrated me, even when I was in high school. We're in San Mateo County, that includes Hillsborough, Menlo Park, Atherton, Burlingame. But because property taxes are thriving supposedly in these suburbs, I also began to understand that decisions at the local level are being made in how Daly City is allocating their budget. How much do we actually invest in our police departments compared to these other areas? And how much instead should we be investing in programs for our youth and our schools? This is a domino effect. This isn't a them versus us. It's more that if we want to change things, then more imagination and creative solutions need to happen. Again, in over 30 years, the narrative hasn't changed from my perspective. I didn't graduate from college taking on debt to sit back and watch. And right now, I need to advocate so that things change for the black students who's labeled as disruptive in a recommendation letter, so that systems at play make it possible for him or her to attend any university of this choice without taking debt. And if they want to be an astronaut, if it's not a stretch coming from Daly City, but a real possibility. I would feel so proud because they're from Daly City. And so in this movement, we really need to advocate for our local government, make these changes so that all of San Mateo County begin to understand and begin the necessary changes with us leading. I know that David Canepa is one voice at the county level, but we need so much more social capital in this, aside from the few, and we can continue to use Band-Aid solutions. I know that Sherlene spoke to mindfulness programs, which I know are helpful, but it's not enough. It's really important that we just see our students and our children as potential leaders and begin investing in them, so that when we sign them up for a program, give them a recommendation letter, that that teacher's able to nominate them strongly. And it's no doubt, because Daly City is standing strongly in this. So thank you for your time. I hope to continue these conversations with you and maybe individually with some.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Some very good points you bring up, and it's really very much appreciated. And hopefully, you will continue to be part of this forum as well. Okay, we have a couple more hands up. Mr. Jordan. And then after Jordan is going to be Marion Brown. And I see no other hands up other than the two right now, so what we're gonna do is change. Oh, Diane just came up. No, I don't want you to go away. I just was seeing if the group had wanted to hear from the chief of police rather than wait to the end. So Stephen, is there a way you can create a poll? And you can send the poll out to everyone if they want to hear from the chief prior to the time we have allotted? I think you can create a quick poll and send it out. Again, community, this is your forum, and we want to do and listen to what you folks have to say. Okay, Mr. Hill, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Good afternoon, everyone. You know, it's been, you know, a wonderful honor to listen to, you know, the situations that people are voicing their opinions on about, you know, how we can change and make things better in our community and our city. As some of you may know, and some of you may not know, I organized a peaceful protest, I believe it was last Wednesday, and you know, my objective was, you know, to allow the community to come in and, you know, speak their opinions and voice their opinions on how they feel about the situation with George Floyd and how, you know, some people in our community might feel about it, but you know, some people aren't willing to always voice their opinions on whatever the situation may be and how the situation can may, you know, make some people feel. And, you know, just listening to a lot of these other people's, you know, opinions on how, you know, the Daly City Police Department can, you know, help us. And, you know, me being a student at Jefferson High School, you know, the police are there a lot. And I just, it would be more, it would be more like, it would, it just would be wonderful if, instead of them always being there to escort students out, or, you know, when students are in trouble, I would like it to be better for, you know, when students are getting in trouble, how about we talk about what can be made better and how things can be done the right way, instead of students being taken advantage of and students being, you know, sent to juvenile. I just think that the police, instead of us having that negative, the negative view of them, instead of us having to always watch out, oh, the police are here, let the police be here to protect us instead of them being here to kill us. And, you know, me being an African-American man living in Daly City, you know, born and raised in Daly City, I don't really, you know, see too much wrong with Daly City Police Department. But, you know, it would be wonderful if Daly City would be able to, you know, impact some people's views of them doing different things, you know, hosting, you know, activities to where the community is, you know, more involved, so that it would feel like they're on our side and so much not to against us. And that's just what I came up here to, you know, say to you guys, and thanks for allowing me to voice my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Thank you for the reminder of the march that you put together and with the collaboration of everyone, including staff and the police department. And it was done very well, and we welcome you. And we welcome anyone who wants to get their voice out, and please know that. Thank you very much. Okay, Marion Brown. Stephen, how we doing on the poll? Are you able to get that poll going?
I am just trying to figure out how to get it to show up on the screen.
Yeah, I guess while folks are speaking, it'll just pop up on their screen and then get the... Yeah, I guess while folks are speaking, it'll just pop up on their screen and then get the result later. Okay, but I'm glad you're working on it. Marion Brown?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you and thank you, Mayor, for the extra minute, although I know it's going to take more than a minute, you know, for us to do this process and see it through. I thank the rest of the council and the speakers before me and especially Jordan. I wanted to reach out to you and say thank you and continue to be strong and grow. The only thing is that I really didn't know about the protest. I did go online and review the mayor's June eleventh post. So I learned a little bit more. So I think maybe however I can help, let me know.
Oh, yeah, I think we lost Marion.
Evening.
Oh, there you go.
Three grandchildren and a number of community members and youth that I have had under my wing. As we were a small community, thinning for ourselves here in Midway Village. My son is now an elected official and I'm very proud of him coming out of this front. And he's going to be very vocal and I appreciate that, too. I've also worked most of my life as far as a community liaison here in Daly City in two thousand nine and two thousand ten in the alcohol and other drug program. I had little issues with that, but to keep it going. I just really tried to reach out to the community and tried to reach out to the government. But I don't believe we were here in Midway Village given a lot of opportunities, a lot of exclusion because of one thing, I believe, being a non homeowner and number two, being black. So I just wanted to also open up my comments by asking if the Daly City Police Department can work on a nine one one call response without being outsourced. I really feel that a lot of problems that were actually perpetuated in Midway Village were because, and recently, because there's so much clutter in the getting the information to, from police station to the community. There's language barriers and then it just, I have personal stories I can't get into. So this will come up at another time. So, yeah, I would like to look into the police department that I'm now learning they have forty percent of the budget, Daly City's budget. So that, you know, I would like that to be looked at. So mostly just, I feel kind of emotional because from the fact that for all these years, thirty eight years here, I'm actually born and raised in San Francisco, but most of my time and effort has been placed in the schools where my children were here in Daly City, which was not a great experience as well. And the decrease in the African American community here in Daly City, to me, it just causes more exclusion. And so I would just like to build a stronger youth leadership in the communities of our diverse residents and people of color. I would like to close these gaps between non communication. I would like to have more acting on new ideas to break stereotypes. And there's a general characterization of communities like mine. We're placed on the bottom of the totem pole because we live in affordable housing or our residents don't speak good English or however they look at us. It's, we're like the last. And, yeah, so another thing is, like I said, I wasn't aware of Jordan's initiative. But I'm very interested in the idea that Dr. Rod put out there about a human rights commission. But I also think that every institution or commission in Daly City should look out for the neighbors and the neighborhoods that are marginalized. Say, for instance, I was looking at the library commission's initiatives yesterday on their Zoom. And I really think that there should be some black history books. And when I'm saying that is there are scholastic books that I have and that I have offered to the library, the Bay Shore Library years ago when my children were young, kindergarten, first grade. They're now college age and those books were never approved to be placed in circulation. So I would like to reach out to the library commission or any other commissions. I have ideas and so that's enough for now and thank you for your time. And thank you, everyone who spoke before me in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And it's very appreciative to hear your thoughts and concerns. I've been getting a text for the past three minutes from someone who's been wanting to speak. So what we're going to do-
Am I still live?
Yeah, you're still live. You can unmute yourself or Stephen can unmute you.
I just unmuted.
Okay. Let's open the floor to Ms. Raina Mayafua. Stephen, if you can unmute her and then we can continue down the list of hands that I see raised.
Okay, Raina is good to go.
Okay, Ms. Raina, you have the-
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to keep it short. I would just like to say I support, I'm also person of color, one hundred percent for Black Lives Matters matters as well as support one hundred percent for our Daly City Police Department. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Our Daly City Police Department has always supported so many, so many things that we've done in the community. I'm also a community leader in Daly City with Pacific Islands Together, as well as an employee for Jefferson Union High School District. There was times that when we had the PPSA meetings, Chief Manny Martinez was always there to support us. When we had community events like the Shine that we had at Jefferson Union High, Jefferson High School, as well as the craft feed that we had. I just want to speak on a lot of positive things that our Daly City Police Department has done for our community. Been serving the community for over thirty years. And we always work well with the Daly City Police Department. And with everything that's going on, we should also acknowledge the work that they do. They go home to families, they also have families that they have to go home to and they have to tend to. I think people, sometimes people forget that. People forget that they have a family at home as well, to have family watching TV and mocking the police department and saying things bad about our police department. So I'm here to speak on behalf of, you know, we have the best police department in the city in the Bay Area. These, the experience that we have with our police department. If I came up too harsh, but I speak from my heart and if people that knows me, I get very emotional, like I, you know, early meetings that we had. But I just want to say, to speak on the times when our police department does come out to Jefferson High School. Yes, they do come out and because they've been called to come out to take some of these of our students away. But they're also there to support our students. They're also there to speak and help our students as well at the different meetings that we have for our PPSA. Like I said, Chief Manny, as well as supporting our athletic department coming out and supporting the different fundraisers we have to give back to our students. So that's all I wanted to say. Forgive me if I upset anybody, but I'm just speaking on behalf of how I feel. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Very much, Ms. Raina. And thank you for everything you do, continue to do for the community. The next person I see is Ms. Diane Chow.
Okay, Honorable City Council and members of the DCPD. My name is Diane Chow. I'm a Jefferson High School graduate and current E.C. Berkeley student. I commend the DCPD for its progressive direction, diversity and protection. However, our current system has been used in other cities to commit police brutality. I ask you to introduce and support an ordinance containing the following set of police reforms, which the DCPD could implement themselves to. First, prohibit chokeholds and strangleholds unless deadly forces authorized. Eric Garner and George Floyd's death warrant isolated incidents. Second, require officers to de-escalate situations before using force when possible. While officers are trained in this, it is not mandated in DCPD's policy. Mental illnesses can hinder an individual's ability to make reasoned judgment in response to law enforcement. Third, require officers to exhaust all other reasonable alternatives before resorting to using authorized deadly force. Fourth, require a use of force continuum that defines and limits the types of force and/or weapons that can be used to respond to specific types of resistance. Fifth, restrict officers from shooting at people and moving vehicles unless the person poses a deadly threat by means other than a vehicle. A moving vehicle alone does not constitute a threat that authorizes deadly force, nor does it hold an equivalent or higher standard than that of the traditional deadly threat. Sixth, require officers to reflect weapons of force like pointing a gun and electronic control weapon. Mr. Mayor, you spoke about the DCPD transparency and there's been a call for oversight. In procedure, these policies ensure all officers are using reasonable force with respect to SATM performance. It minimizes use of force and increases DCPD's training on stabilizing situations for vulnerable populations. Some of these policies are practiced but not explicitly stated in the policy manual. The systemic racism exists within the police institution and it takes more than accountability to filter out disproportionate rates of excessive force. There are basic protections against police violence that need to be enacted. I emailed the city council draft of an ordinance I worked on with these policies for you to review and revise, along with the petition I started that is signed by five hundred fifty individuals. Many of these supporters are your constituents. I wish to work with you all on this proposal. Please read and respond to the email. We collectively ask for your support. Thank you for having this forum and I look forward to having more conversations with the city during other meetings.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chow. Okay. We have Leanne Young. Leanne, I got your text and hang in there and we'll get to you. Holly Lim?
Mayor, before we go to the next speaker, I am unable to do the poll for this meeting because I didn't have the feature turned on. So.
Okay, all right. Well, it looks like we're on a roll now. And I do feel the chief can answer some questions. Let's continue with some of the hands up, but some folks have been waiting and maybe their time is limited. Holly, can you hear me? You have the floor.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So my name is Holly Lim and I am also a new Daly City resident. And I want to say that even though I'm a new resident, I've had family who's lived here for two decades now. And so this is a bit of like a second home to me. And I have friends and so basically friends and family live here and usually here on the weekends when I wasn't living here. So in that time that I've gotten to know Daly City, I can tell that it has fallen short of addressing racism and anti-blackness in this community, my community now, especially when it comes to the police. And honestly, enough with the half measures that continue to hurt us. We need stronger policies now and the only way we can move forward toward solidarity with black lives and with people of color is if our economic priorities reflect our moral values as a city. So for a city that invests over forty percent of the city budget to police, it's time for Daly City to redirect police funding and resources towards sorely funded community needs. I am asking the mayor and the city council to take the following two actions. The first is to launch a community work group by this summer to design a community oversight police commission to ensure accountability and transparency of DCPD. This work group must include a variety of perspectives such as youth educators and have a variety or a diversity of racial identities and socioeconomic statuses. I also hear talk of a human rights commission. And if they end up happening, they should also have the power to have independent oversight of the police and must also have the budget and resources to conduct the oversight work. Secondly, I urge the city council and mayor to commit by this upcoming council meeting on June twenty second to deprioritize the city's police budget for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty one and in future ongoing budget negotiations. And to reprioritize essential services such as social services, affordable housing, mental health services, libraries and parks and recreation. And I also encourage them to explore alternatives to policing, including preventative measures, restorative justice programs and trauma-informed practices. Let's actively reimagine what public safety looks like in our city. It is possible. The city council's commitment to these asks can transform community interactions with the police form, the police force, align our infrastructure and economic priorities to honor and uplift black lives and actively address racist beliefs and behaviors within the Daly City community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lim. The next person we have, Nick Ochapenti.
Yes, thank you.
Good, okay, you got the floor.
Thank you, Nelson Vester, Vice Mayor Manalo and the rest of the city council. And of course, the rest of our community. Thank you for being here and being a part of this conversation. Not to repeat what everybody's been saying because I agree, I think, with all of it. And I think some of the things we have to keep in mind as we're in this moment, in this movement, at this period in our own country civil rights movement and human rights movement across the world is in a city like Daly City where we border San Francisco and the rest of the Bay Area, we have a unique position in San Mateo County to take a lead on a lot of things. And I think we know what those things are. It's not always an easy conversation to have. As another, as a fellow public official here on the Jefferson High School District School Board, as a trustee, you know, we know that we have to engage issues that need to be discussed openly, public. And they might offend some people because some people think they stand to lose something as our community moves forward, certain things. You know, we changed the mascot at Jefferson and not everybody agreed with that, but that was important. And it involved discussing race. And so, you know, we know we need to discuss these things, but it's beyond words. We need to take actions. And so, you know, as a school board, we prioritize education around race, around culture, around equity altogether in terms of identity and demographics and understanding, not only like where we're at, but where we need to go. And so when we look at Daly City and we understand, we've all been in different situations where, you know, we can be thankful of the police and we can also be critical of the police and the police can as well. Certainly many officers probably join the police because they want to make a change for those same reasons. And at this point, we're not asking people to be quiet about certain things while moving on to other things. We want people to speak up, everybody, that includes the police department. We've seen that in San Jose with the police chief. We've seen that with departments across the nation, with San Francisco, with Mayor London Breed taking action in restructuring the police department. These are progressive things that will actually help everybody, including police, to do their job better. But if we want to do our job better as a community, we have to set our priorities straight. And it's important, not just as a school board, you know, for us to look at these things, but as an entire community. I think when I raise my voice, it's not just to improve education on a subject, but improving the steps we take to take action on it. but improving the steps we take to take action on it. And so if we're looking at the root causes of violence and we talk about police violence because we're not immune to it, Daly City Police, like every other police department, has made mistakes. And, you know, they're not immune to, you know, the law. In times like these, we should all understand that we're all struggling out here, we're all essential. And that when we're looking at the police department, we need them to step up too. But in this sense, we need them to step up by stepping back and understanding that the funding that's allocated, forty percent, there's no justifiable argument that we need to fund anything for forty percent, you know, in our city budget. And we are, we have placed a higher disparity in the county. Daly City is often overlooked, not just by our county, but, you know, by private sector. And so we want more investment in our community resources and we should be thinking about how we, we, the people in Daly City, including the city council especially, take those steps. So I encourage taking the steps that we heard earlier, including taking immediate action as soon as the next council meeting, to take steps to look at how we can restructure our police department, defund it in the sense of we're refunding and reinvesting and allocating to our other departments. I worked Park and Rec back before Reckon Library was a department and we know, like, our libraries aren't open all the time and we know they're underfunded. We know social services, health services can benefit from all this, including better practices and twenty-first century policing practices recommended by former President Obama. President Obama put those together in 2015, you know, with a task force. So we should be moving forward with the minimum, but we should also be raising our own expectations of our community and our city council. And from the start of this discussion today, I think we can do that. So I will look forward to that and of course, being a part of that process as well. Thank you for everybody for speaking up, hearing us today.
Thank you, Ms. Ochapenti. The next person we have is Nicholas Perez. Nicholas, are you with us?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Ah, there you go. Okay, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council and Chief Officer of the Police Department, everybody. I guess for myself, I've been living in Daly City since I was two years old. Now I'm 23, so I have a long history here. The same goes for my whole community, my family, my friends. So I think everybody who's spoken already, they've given a lot of great solutions and I agree with all that. So I think what I want to provide is just a perspective of the youth and of how we felt so far just growing up here. So for myself, I went to school, Westlake School Elementary, then I went to Ben Franklin Middle School, and then Westmore High School. And I also know the different experiences of my friends who went to Jefferson High School. So hearing about and just seeing the police there on a daily basis, it always gave you that eerie feeling about, you know, why are they really here? Even hearing rumors about Westmore High School not having a football team because they didn't want to attract the wrong crowd, which was blacks and Samoans, that gave us the wrong impression about, okay, what exactly is going on here? And even seeing just not as many black people or Latino people, or just people of color in general in positions of power. For you, Mayor, I mean, I'm glad that you're in this position, but I think more people need to be in positions of power as far as when it comes to people of color. There needs to be more support towards our communities when it comes to Park and Rec, which is something I've experienced my whole life that has always been underfunded. We always wondered why hasn't there been more programs for ourselves, whether we just want to go play basketball at a court indoors and we have to go pay like six, seven dollars for it, where some kids can't afford that. I know friends who weren't able to afford that. I used to not be able to afford that during middle school and high school, just due to the fact that I couldn't ask my mom for seven dollars and I was embarrassed of the fact. And now looking at it, at the youth nowadays, I don't want them to go through that same type of struggle. And just seeing, you know, how I've heard statistics throughout this conversation about, you know, most of the attacks that have been going on by police brutality have been people of color. It's surprising still because I feel like Daly City is a very progressive city. I think we do get a lot of things right, in my opinion. But the data still shows otherwise. So I honestly feel that, you know, there are gaps, but I still feel strongly that we can all get it together. I feel like if we can just invest more into our communities, more into these different programs, or there is Park and Rec, whether it is libraries, whether it is, you know, health centers, which a lot of the youth has utilized, I can speak for myself and a lot of different friends, that we've all went to those youth health centers for different things. So they are, they come in super handy for us, but the fact that these are still getting defunded, the fact that more police funding is being used and we all just live in fear of it. We don't want to, we don't want to die. We don't want to have to walk in one day, we get shot or our friends get shot and we have to live with that. That's something I don't think any of us want to live with. And I'm sure the police don't want to feel like that either. They don't want to feel like everybody's scared of them. We all want to live in peace and tranquility and have a peaceful life with one another. So I think if we can just all come to some type of conclusion where we can push forward with that and get the right funding in the right allocated places and make sure that everybody's on the same page, then that's when I feel like we can come to a true resolution here in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Okay, the next person we have is Morgan M. Lay. And the next will be Leanne Young. Leanne, okay, all right, Morgan.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can. Go ahead, you have the floor, sir.
All right. My wife and I have been residents of Daly City for over fifty years. Daly City is a diverse city. As far as racial balance, my neighborhood is Filipino, white, black, Indian. We don't have, we don't see a problem. That doesn't mean there isn't a problem, but we don't see it. The police department is diverse. They have Pacific Islanders, they've got Chinese, they've got Asians, they've got Filipino, they've got almost every minority. And cutting the funding to the police department, I think, would be not good for the city. It's going to impact the services the police department offers and the response times. Because if you're going to cut funding, you're more than likely going to have to cut officers. The, my understanding is the department right now is understaffed. And I know that everybody's talking about using alternative services, be it health, you know, mental health, worker, or whatever. But then who determines who to send out on a call? And what if they send out the wrong team? And they have to then go back and call for the police? That's just going to delay response time. And I don't think it's, it's for the best of the city. I don't think defunding is the answer. There may, there are a lot of problems, there are a lot of things the city needs. But most of the problems the city has financially are a result of bad management in the past. And I know that that's something that you, Mr. Mayor, and the other council members are aware of. So I just don't feel that defunding is the right answer to this, to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. M. Lay. We're going to call on Leanne. Did you want to speak now? Because you said you were in a better place that you wanted to, or did you want to wait?
I would like to speak now.
Okay, great. Tobin, you'll be next. Tobin Galan, you'll be next. Okay, Ms. Leanne Young, you have the floor.
Okay. So I just wanted to make a few points. And it's great to listen to other people to also get ideas. But I think getting creative with the funds like people were bringing up is a really great idea because I'm in the recreation therapy field. So I understand about recreation and how important that is to everyone's mental health and also staying active as well. And noticing that the library funding has gone down. So, you know, youth can't go, not just youth, but everybody can't go to the library when there's less hours open. And obviously during COVID, we couldn't go. But as well as parks and recreation programs, which I think if we can try to get creative with combining the police actually being there for community presence. One of the things I found is that when I first moved into Southern Hills, because I grew up in the Excelsior, I became very involved. And so when you're more involved and you really kind of instill that in the youth to be involved in the community, then they won't be as fearful of police, you know, and emergency personnel, et cetera, fire department, whoever. But I think if you create more opportunities for positive interaction in the community, whether it's through recreational events with the police present and the police actually get to know who these youth are, then people will also, the youth or any adult that might be felt like they're targeted for racial profiling, would not be because they're more familiar with the police officers as well. You know, knowing each other's names, knowing each other's faces. You know, Daly City is smaller than San Francisco. So I feel like, you know, just making your presence known and feeling comfortable in your skin to be able to do that. Also, I just wanted to comment that there are some hotspot areas that I noticed in the northern Daly City area and wondering how Daly City will address it. And it's mostly individuals who are, seem to be homeless as well as have mental health issues. And I've seen this up at the, where the Goldilocks is very north of, it's up at the top of the hill, as well as Lucky's and Walgreens. And I think it's important to address that because if you're an older adult, you don't feel safe, you know, shopping by yourself. So, and it's more to me, not so much the color of the person's skin, it's more the mental health issue and that the individual probably does need treatment, but they're sitting outside Walgreens or Lucky's or Goldilocks, asking for money, et cetera. I'm wondering if we can also communicate how we're going to also do gradual reopening in Daly City because of COVID? And how are we going to be communicating that? Is it through mail, email, or Channel 26, you know, that we have? Also, in terms of education, my kids are still in high school and they go to Terranova. And in terms of what they're learning in school, there aren't really a lot of strong Asian role models being taught, you know, in the school, high schools. I mean, they may have a sprinkling of Asian-American history, but they don't really get a sense of strong Asian role models, which I think is really important because we don't see it on television. We still, in 2020, do not see a lot of strong Asian role models.
Three minutes is up. I'm sorry, my alarm, my alarm isn't coming through on the speakers, but I'm just going to jump in and say that.
All right, but yeah, the basic thing is community and trying to include all races instead of, you know, just focusing on one particular race. But community, I think, is really important and mental health funding. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Tobin Galan. Tobin? There you go. Okay, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvester, and thank you, Vice Mayor Manalo, and the rest of the members of the city council. My name is Tobin Galan and I am a member of Anak Bayan Daly City, which is an organization of Filipino youth and students here in Daly City. And I also work as, and we're also, we're based at Skyline College, which is one of the main campuses serving working-class youth in Daly City. Additionally, I'm also a student service professional at San Francisco State and, which is also a college serving this community as well. And I kind of just want to echo and voice additional support for this proposal for, for a human rights commission of some sort here in Daly City to be, you know, monitoring the issue of, of different, of different issues that are impacting so many members of our community, specifically the working-class communities of color here. And I also want to maybe propose that maybe this, this commission or another kinds would, there might be some sort of building, of systemizing community control over the operations of police here in Daly City. I know it's, there are other cities also pushing forward movements for community control in which perhaps on this commission could be members of the community from different sectors and able to have some sort of decision-making power over the hiring, the discipline, the budget and spending of police in our city. And additionally, kind of also wanting to lift up other calls for, like, directing funds, maybe not prioritizing it going towards, towards law enforcement, but really for services that are directed towards working-class families and youth as ways to really prevent any, prevent further incidents of excessive use in police violence by, yeah, by giving those, those opportunities to, to the communities who need it the most. And so, yeah, I think that's basically it that I just wanted to really echo and back those calls as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galan, and thank you for being here. It really means a lot. Next, we have Jose Villalobos. Jose, can you hear me? There you go, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and Mayor Sylvester. My name is Jose Villalobos. I've been a lifelong resident of Daly City, nineteen eighty-two till today. I currently work at Jefferson High School as a counselor in Daly City. And I just wanted to say that in my time being a resident and citizen here, I've had good encounters with DCPD and I also have negative encounters with DCPD. Definitely in my twenties, I learned very early not to wear a beanie while driving because I, every time I would, I would definitely get pulled over. That was just something odd that would happen. But it's not about me. Today, we're here just to talk about definitely the recent incidents. And I actually do appreciate the city council having this forum, as well as I went to the protest last Wednesday held by the students at Jefferson High School and being treated very well by DCPD. But I have noticed just, you know, it's very important with the upcoming census, how the numbers of the population are going to look like. I was just looking at the budget from ten years ago to today. And I've just noticed, and I think anyone that's lived here has noticed just how the budget for line items on culture and recreation have been cut as well as the economic and community developments areas have been cut in the last ten years, whereas in the areas of public safety, that area has increased. I think, as some people have already mentioned, simple measures to include banning chokeholds, requiring de-escalation, exhausting all alternatives before utilizing force are good starts. But I believe we also need to reimagine how the police departments should be overburdened on some issues that can probably be best handled by social workers and other areas that could probably, we can basically utilize DCPD in other areas that, that don't require that sort of presence. As a lifelong citizen of Daly City, I feel like we just need more transparency as well from the Daly City police departments. I feel just issues that have happened in the last couple of years, such as the situation with Jose Armando Espar Lopez and ICE and Errol Chang that happened a couple of years back, where the DCPD SWAT team was involved. We just need more answers when things like that happen. I feel like the response to those issues being brought up, I feel just as a resident of the city, were not necessarily addressed fully transparent. I just want to make sure that we just have steps in place to make sure that something like George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery just doesn't happen. And we don't wait until something like that happens for our city representatives and the police department to respond and to react. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Villalobos. And as a one, and I'll say the same to you, thank you for being here tonight to be with us. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised at this time. It's not over yet, everyone. So, it looks like we have time. What I would like to do is present our Chief of Police and his staff, Chief Patrick Hensley, and I see Captain Christensen there in the room as well. But basically, just to make a statement or two and your thoughts, and perhaps now, if you wish to address some of the questions you've heard of tonight, feel free to do so. And we're gonna allow some time for you folks to speak as well. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to the Chief of Police and his staff, Captain Christensen, you have the floor, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna make sure you can hear me clearly.
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Okay, originally the plan was, I do have a statement that I would like to read to you, the council, and everybody that's on this Zoom call with us. But the original plan was also that Captain Christensen was gonna go through and talk about the recommended changes to our use of force policy and present some of the data on our actual uses of force. Would you and the council still like us to do that second part? Or are you only looking for me to give my statement at this time?
Well, Chief, give us all you got. I mean, we'll try to soak in as much as we have. And I'm sure if anyone has questions, we can entertain as time permits. And this won't be the last forum, but you go for it.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and our community members on the Zoom call. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to talk about our police department's use of force policy following the senseless and tragic death of Mr. George Floyd in Minneapolis. What we saw on that video was contrary to everything we learned as police officers and everything we believe in as human beings. Your police officers feel the same way I do, angry, frustrated, and deeply disturbed. As a police department, we continue to have difficult conversations with each other and our community. Police officers understand that we have a duty and an obligation to protect and serve every member of this community, and we take that oath very seriously. We remain resilient and focused on our mission, and will continue to serve this community with honor and professionalism as we continue building relationships with our community that matter. I have spent most of my life either living or working in this city. I attended school here, buried my wife here, purchased my first home here, and both of my children were born here. I've been a police officer for 26 years here, and I now serve as your Chief of Police. This is a very diverse community, and we have a very diverse police department. We stand in and with our community every single day. We believe in accountability. We also believe actions speak louder than words. In 2016, we purchased our Use of Force Accountability Software. That system ensures that we don't miss the opportunity to track every single use of force we're involved in, as well as providing us with an early intervention system regarding officers who may need additional training. That software requires every use of force be reviewed by a sergeant, a lieutenant, and a captain. We are one of only, we are one of only a few agencies that utilize that software system. In 2017, we began training officers in de-escalation, procedural justice, and implicit bias. In 2018, we purchased our Force Analysis Software that provides the public with all of the details regarding every use of force we're involved in. A total of 150 data points are pulled from every use of force report, and this objective data is then shared with the public via our website. We made the decision to implement these accountability measures and provide de-escalation, procedural justice, and implicit bias training on our own, with no pressure to do this from either the public or the state government. Once again, actions are stronger than words. I am very aware, and we've talked about it tonight, of the political pressure calling for defunding the police. Not long after I was hired in 1994, we were authorized 121 police officer positions in this city. We had a community policing unit that included full-time officers assigned to each of our high schools, as well as officers assigned to our elementary and middle schools. We have recognized for a very long time the importance of building relationships with our children as that is the path forward to a healthy community. Today, we have one full-time school resource officer to cover all of our schools. Over the last 26 years, we have been continually asked to do more with less. What was 121 authorized police officers in 1994? Today is 101 police officers. As our population continues to increase, our number of police officers over the last 20 years has continued to decrease. We have the lowest officer-to-resident ratio in the entire county. And although I understand police officers are costly, and I acknowledge that fact, I can appreciate the difficult decisions that had to be made over the years, but I would still argue that we have been defunding our police department for the better part of 20 years. I recognize and appreciate that this council has begun thoughtfully and cautiously restoring police officer positions with guidance from our City Manager, Shana Malp. We are grateful, and despite our continued staffing challenges, we remain resilient and very proud that year after year, Daly City is recognized as one of the 100 safest cities in the state of California, and lately, in the top 50. This does not happen by accident. It is through the dedication of police officers working hand-in-hand in building relationships with our community to ensure Daly City remains a safe place to live, work, and visit. I am very proud of our police officers and our community. We will continue to be better and build relationships that matter. My commitment to everyone on this, at this meeting has never wavered. Please continue to provide us with the resources we need to succeed. Captain Christensen will now present on our use of force policy and talk about some of the recommendations that are made and that we are considering. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Captain, I, I can't hear you. Barely.
I'll try and zoom a little closer. It's gonna be a PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Okay.
We can try and share on the screen, so just wanna confirm to you if I'm able to share the screen here. You're allowed to. Okay. All right, so just confirm that you can see the PowerPoint on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, I'll go through this quick PowerPoint slide. It'll talk about the agenda topics here first. We'll cover our current policy, basically when it was adopted, how it was designed. Then we'll go into some specific policy sections that are under review, several of which have been commented on this evening. And then we'll do a quick slide on just some general use of force data. So our current use of force policy is Recognizes Policy Number 300. It was revised in March of 2020. Part of that review process was reviewed by the city attorney, as well as by review of the Police Officers Association attorney. All of our personnel were trained on the policy and newest legislative laws that relate to that use of force policy by the POA attorneys in August of 2019. An additional policy overview was held in January of 2020. This policy is in compliant with current law, which incorporates Senate Bill 230 and Assembly Bill 392, which are some of the nation's strictest use of force mandates. And just for purpose of context, I'll briefly cover what those bills associate.
Captain, we need to see the advanced through the slides. I think we're still on the slide number one. There we go.
Can you just see it on the screen here?
Yes, now it's moving.
Sorry about that. We'll just leave it here, though. So, I'll backtrack real quick. The agenda was the current policy, sections under review, and the use of force data. So our current policy is, that policy listed 300. It was revised in March of 2020, reviewed by city attorney and the POA attorneys. It was trained several times for all department staff in August of 2019 and January 2020. The policy isn't compliant with current law, which incorporates the Senate Bill and the Assembly Bill, which I'll cover, which are some of the nation's strictest use of force mandates. So a way of context, these are the two bills that our policy is, our use of force policy is supported by, Senate Bill 230, which was adopted in September of 2019 for California, focused on policy, training, and reporting requirements to include de-escalation techniques, crisis intervention tactics, and other alternatives to force when feasible, as well as proportionality of level of force used to level of resistance. The Assembly Bill 392 was adopted in August of 2019, and this one focused on redefining the use of deadly force and underscored serious responsibility for the use of deadly force, consideration of other options when feasible, used when necessary. It needed to be objectively reasonable force based on an officer's perspective and recognition of disabilities and the requirement to identify self when feasible prior to use of that force. So, use of force policy recommendations, these are a few things that have been brought up this evening that we've also been taking a look at closely over the last week and a half or two weeks now, I'm in meeting and conferring with our POA representatives, sorry, our Police Officer Association representatives. So a couple of policies that we have currently in place that were highlighted, the need for a verbal warning when possible before using deadly force. Our current legal policy covers that. To state a verbal warning should precede the use of deadly force where feasible. Again, that's something that also comes out of the associated bills that I referenced earlier, and a required to intervene to stop another officer from using excessive force, which basically says that the officer must intercede to prevent such use of force and report to a supervisor immediately. So currently, policies that we have in place now that are compliant with the It Can't Wait, which are some of the policies that were referenced earlier. There's a few policies that have been discussed that we have reviewed and remain unchanged at this point, one of which is prohibit officers from shooting at a moving vehicle when the vehicle is the only weapon. Shooting at vehicles is highly discouraged, and we reinforce that through our policy. We also reinforce that through conversation and training with our officers on a regular basis. But our current policy does allow for officers to shoot at a vehicle if an officer cannot reasonably get out of the way of an oncoming vehicle or the vehicle is used as a weapon to injure or kill members of the public. So, again, highly discouraged, low frequency, but there are domestic terrorism and terrorism-type situations that had, that type of situation has existed, and taking that option away from the officers would create a challenge. Use of force continuum or matrix that defines the type of force. The, sorry, the decision of level of force to be used should be reasonable, and it's covered in law, which is the PC, the Penal Code 835A2, which was supported by some of those bills mentioned earlier. And it states, in determining whether deadly force is necessary, officers shall evaluate each situation in light of particular circumstances of each case and shall use other available resources and techniques if reasonably safe and feasible to an objectively reasonable officer. So it discusses the need to be able to use the different force levels that are available without necessarily having to escalate from step one to whatever the highest level of force may be. So there is a, one policy that has been mentioned several times this evening, and that's the carotid control hold. While it's not necessarily considered a chokehold, this is what is commonly considered a hold around the neck, which is intended to stop vascular blood flow to the brain in order to render somebody unconscious for a short period of time. And as effective today, the Police Officers Association and the Police Chief have agreed to move, remove it from the use of force policy. So a directive went out earlier today prohibiting the use of the carotid control hold, which will no longer be an approved technique in our policy. And currently, the proposed language is gonna be reviewed by the Police Officers Association attorney as well as the city attorney on how that looks at the policy, but as of today, it is prohibited. These are a few other policies that have been discussed and that are under review currently with the POA. De-escalation is one that's talked about. It's one that we train on a regular basis. It's built into our defensive tactics trainings, as well as some of our de-escalation-specific trainings. And it does a requirement during the use of force situation. So our current policy and use of force training supports de-escalation, and we're currently working with the POA again and the associated attorneys on proposed language that will specifically state de-escalation in the policy to make it a little more clear moving forward. Comprehensive reporting that includes use of force and threat of force. Our current policy does require documentation for all physical use of force cases. And we're, again, working on additional language. That's gonna be proposed to include intentional pointing of a firearm at a subject as something that's required documentation. Lastly, exhaust all other reasonable alternatives before resorting to using deadly force. Again, our current policy states that officers should evaluate the use of other reasonably available resources and techniques when determining whether to use deadly force. And our policy reflects this standard, which is derived from the current state law and those associated bills mentioned earlier. And additionally, language is being considered as well. So we have one slide here on our general use of force data. I'm sorry, we have two. So our use of force data is taken from several different locations. We have our record management system, which is our general reporting system for police officer reports, which collects a lot of data. We also have the Blue Team software, which is an incident reporting software for all officer use of force applications, pursuits, collisions, and supervisory notes. IA Pro is the, kind of the housing of the data for Blue Team. I mean, it's a personal tracking software, which provides early intervention alerts and statistical data. And much of the data that is posted on our website through Police Strategies and that dashboard is derived from the information out of IA Pro. And the Police Strategies, which is the report in the dashboard on our website, comes from an objective third-party analysis of our data intended to identify use of force trends and provides our transparency dashboard. Some statistics for 2019. The Daly City Police Department had roughly 77,000 CAD incidents. CAD is computer-aided dispatch. So those are calls for service and/or on-view calls or anything that's generated and creates a CAD number. So there were 76,880 CAD number incidents reported in 2019. When considering the number of incidents and the number of use of force for 2019, which was 86 use of force incidents, it equates to 0.1% of use of force for all incidents within a year. Last year, we had a, a arrest total number of 2,183. Considering the number of use of force incidents, force was used in 3.9% of arrests. And based on the averages that are collected from Police Strategies from 87 other law enforcement agencies across the country, the national average is 4%. 96% of force used was physical only, to include hands, body weight, things of that nature. And it's important to note that physical control incorporates basic hand controls, which primarily is grabbing of the arm and the wrist to control somebody's movement if they're actively or passively resisting. Only four incidents last year reported for use of force incidents involved a weapon, which could be considered taser, impact weapons, and/or canines. I believe that was the end of the slide.
Okay, thank you, Chief and Captain Christensen. I'm sure there's more questions as a result of your presentation, but we wanna provide a mechanism for folks to provide your questions to us based upon what you just heard. Stephen, can you make sure, I guess, those who registered tonight, provide them? Uh, Stephen, can you make sure, I guess, those who registered tonight, um, provide them, uh, a link to the contact you if they have additional questions? Uh, the reason why I'm kind of moving kind of fast right now is I want to respect everybody's time here. This will not be the end. But I've also been advised of two things. Number one, we have nine comments. Folks who have submitted comments, I like to hear those comments. I want you folks to hear it as well. And, uh, a question came up and you can see it in the chat. Uh, would the recording of this be made available? That's something we have to work through. The city attorney. Can I get an answer to that?
Uh, we actually will have this on our YouTube channel. Um, we're live streaming right now and it's all done via YouTube. So afterwards, we'll, we'll have it there.
Thanks so much. Uh, would you, uh, Stephen, would you mind some of the comments? Looks like we only have about four minutes. Can you read some of the comments to the folks here while they're here and?
Yes. So, um, there's nine online through our virtual meeting page, and the first one is from Janet Armus. It says, reform to police procedures regarding use of force is not the solution to police brutality. As it does not ensure the decrease of police violence. For instance, NYPD banned chokeholds in nineteen ninety-three, but a police officer was still able to perform a chokehold on Eric Garner, which led to his death. Instead of using the taxpayers' dollar to retrain police officers on new use of force policies. I would like to see that money poured into our community. Forty percent of the general fund taxpayers' dollars are invested in DCPD's budget. That money should be redirected to services that uplift the community like affordable housing, social and mental services, a COVID relief plan, education, just to name a few. Currently, only four percent of the Daly City budget is invested in economics and community development. What are you going to do to change that? Uh, the next comment is from Grace David. It says, black lives matter. Yes, all colors matter. I am a colored person, a Filipino-American. In Daly City, we are not a minority. Our city officials are colored and we see each other as human, our neighbor, our friend. And that includes law enforcement officers. They are our father, brother, son, mother, sister, daughter, relatives, and friends. And they took that risky job to protect us, their family and friends. We all learn from the mistakes of other people and police from other communities. More than ever, they need our support. Law-abiding citizens have no problem obeying our police officers. It's those who have something to hide who do not want cameras on the streets. Which were there for our protection. And now they ask for defunding the police department. Our lives and safety matter, and I believe that our city and county and state officials believe that. And it's also the reason why they work tirelessly to get support for the frontliners and essential workers during this pandemic crisis. Our capable city and county officials, including law enforcement officers, deserve appreciation for that service to our community. So thank you. Uh, the next comment is from, actually, this person is in the Zoom meeting right now. Um, it's from Moay Thomas Sacy. Maybe we should give him the opportunity to to speak here, Mayor.
Um, uh, yeah, uh, he's here in chat with us. I mean, on the conversation. Uh, let's move on, finish reading all the comments and then, uh, we'll have Mr. Thomas C.C. speak.
Okay, um, there's another comment, okay, from someone who already spoke tonight and then. Okay, there's a comment from Shaquille Ali, uh, the president of the Jefferson Elementary School District. It says, I appreciate the city council hosting this forum tonight. I look forward to following up with all of you to create proactive solutions to the problems of racial division. And or profiling in our community. Yes, Dr. Rod, like you said, we won't solve systemic racism in one meeting and we have to make change because racism. Racism didn't start just now. The next comment is from Kathy Pantasey. And it says, I was the secretary to the Daly City Police Chief Reese. When future Chief Pat Hensley first came on the Daly City Police Force, and I noted that he was a very focused whip-smart officer. Over time, he became a leader who can work with all of our citizens. I believe that we have the leader we need in Chief Hensley, who will be able to reform our police practices and take us into an era of more equal justice. We are in good hands with Chief Hensley. The next comment is from Christine Fuller, and it reads. Dear city council staff and attendees, let me first say I have been born and raised in Daly City for almost fifty years. And have also lived in Hunter's Point on Kiska Way and San Francisco. I have grown up with a melting pot of culture and a multiracial myself. I have lost many black lives that were very close to me. I also had a lifelong friend murdered by SFPD, shot five times. Excessive force needs to change. Yet I have witnessed a murder such as George Floyd. I believe that our Daly City Police Department has phenomenal leadership, officers, and proper procedure and protocols. I am not certain of their use of force policies. But I'm against chokeholds for certain. Also, everyone keeps talking about defunding the police. We are limited as it is with sometimes only six officers on at a time for a whole city. Also, the county in deficit fifty-two million. Is it ideal to ask for more change? And I agree to help see how more resources. But where is the funding going to come from? With that said, I am in hopes that this never happens to another. No matter the color of someone's skin. Lives do matter. Blue lives matter. Solutions, more engagement with the public, community meetings or open forum, get officers in schools or community centers outreach. And I also attended the Black Student Union March. It's very inspiring as to systemic change needed. Okay, and the the next comment is from Pixie Castillo, Castillo, who I believe is actually in our meeting. So maybe I'll, I will. Actually, I don't see that person here anymore, so I'll read it. Um, how can Daly City move towards democratic community control of the police? As someone who also works with Daly City young people, how do we have youth voice included? And the last comment received online is from Erwin Bonilla. And it says, in coordination with DCPD, is there a way to develop community relation officers unarmed to support school partnerships as much as possible? I hope we can de-escalate the use of deadly force.
Uh, thank you, Stephen. Well done. Uh, I'd like to turn it over now to Reverend Mo Thomas C.C. Uh, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvester and council members. Who on this very beautiful meeting today that we share our idea. And share our minds as how we make our city a more beautiful and a safe city in the San Francisco Bay Area. I speak in behalf of the family that have been here at least sixty years. Who came in the early sixties. And there have been generations, not only of a family of citizens of here in the city of Daly City, but as a minority family. A family of Polynesian origin and mixed. And we've been here this whole time. And we came here because Daly City was the safest city in the Bay Area. And it was the safest city because of the police department. Unfortunately, the police department was known as the most prejudicial force in the whole Bay Area. For the last fifty, forty, thirty years. They were not culturally sensitive. They're very biased. They were very, there was a lot of profiling. Race profiling. That forty, thirty years ago. Then we started to make complaints and raise our voice. I myself have appeared in that chamber several times and made known our concerns. And thank God, the police and the city and the mayors and the people in the past have listened. I can tell you for sure, at least in the last fifteen years, there have been changes. From the police department, especially when Chief Martinez was there. They, he started to hire minorities, Samoan, Polynesians, Tongans, Filipinos. And as someone mentioned before, the force is the most diverse now in the whole San Francisco. But I can tell you this, San Francisco, Daly City is still the most safest place in the whole Bay Area because of the force. Now, do we want to change some policy? They have alluded, the captain has alluded to the policy changing, including getting rid of the chokehold. And I will, uh, recommend that not only getting rid in in words, but also in practice. Chief Hensley mentioned several times that action speaks louder than words. I personally testify to this. When Chief Martinez was the chief of Daly City. Captain Hensley was his right man. And there were problems going on between the Polynesians, the Pacific Islands, the black communities, and other communities in the whole Bay Area. All the police forces in the Bay Area, including Daly City, South San Francisco, San Francisco. And all the Bay Area, including the FBI, came together, tried to help save our young people from the violence that had been going on many years. And I can tell you, Chief Captain Hensley, back then, when he was a, when he was a captain. He personally went with me to the store to buy the sodas, the napkins, the stuff to help. This function come together. So I applaud you, Chief Hensley. And I hear you. Your actions have been speaking loudly in the last fifteen years. And I thank you for your leadership. You have hired more Pacific Islanders, more minorities, and you are changes your force. And there's a lot of changes in the last, at least in the last fifteen years. I hear your, 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 your statistics that say the use of force data. Only point one percent of force was used and only four incidents. Please, Mayor and council people, members, and the people of Daly City. We, I caution you, I also a member of the law enforcement in another county. And I caution you about defunding the police department. We are known as the most safest in the, in the Bay Area. But now, according to the statistics that we deserve from the chief and his police and his department. We are the lowest per capita police per citizen. That's not safe. I've also, I'm also a volunteer youth worker and Christian education programmers for the youth of Pacific Island since nineteen ninety-one. I have worked with the city and county of San Francisco, specifically Mark Stallings. We tried to put up a youth center thirty years ago, but funding was not available. We struggled to come up with services for the youth and a community, and we're able to. But we cannot get rid of the forces. Security and the safety is very important in our city and county. So I, I commend Chief Hensley and I ask you, Mayor Sylvester and the council, please do not defund. Consider the safety of our people here in this city. God bless you all and have a good evening.
All right, thank you, uh, Thomas C.C., and it's very much appreciative. I think at this particular time, it's already after seven. Uh, this is not the end. Uh, Stephen, I've been reviewing some of the chats and there are some questions that have asked, been asked during the chat. If I can ask with permission of the city manager, if we can memorialize some of them and see if we can get some answers. And then put together another forum to move forward and address some of those questions. So, uh, with that, uh, this meeting is going to be adjourned and, uh, please stay in contact and we will continue to provide everyone updates. I think it's only appropriate. I I shouldn't be able to doing all the talking here. I'll, um, turn it over to any of my council members if they have any last comments before we close. Okay, hearing, yes.
Mayor, I know it was reiterated by the community and some of the points are probably listed. But I I do want to see if there's any research that can be moved forward around a Human Rights Commission.
Uh, well, uh, thank you for that. Any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Well, first of all, thanks to everybody that was on the community and your input. And this is not, as the mayor explained, this is not the last thing. Uh, I also ask if, um, my colleagues and if the chief doesn't mind on our next, the next time we have a session. To, so he can explain that we, they do do a lot of community programs and not to say that we, um, may not, we can do more. But they didn't get a chance, um, to explain about the PALS and the the many other things. Police academy that they have for our citizens and things of that nature. So if it's okay with my colleagues. Um, perhaps next time they'll be able to have a chance to explain some of the the things that they do do in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Vani. Okay, uh, anymore?
Thank you, Chief and Christiansen.
Okay, being that there aren't any further comments, uh, once again, want to thank everyone. And we will get back to you. And thank you so much. And, uh, it's a pleasure to hear from the community. And we will look at the questions that have been asked this evening and get back to you and hopefully provide. Uh, not hopefully, but we will provide another forum for you to, uh, be here and talk to us. So with that being said, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.